You tell me when you're ready.
Okay.
Everybody else ready? You guys ready to go?
Recording in progress.
Okay. All right, hey, welcome everybody. Let's call the order the Oakland Town Commission meeting for August 26, 2025. Please stand for the Land or Big Sammy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Mack.
Most holy and everlasting Father, we come to see that to say thank you. Truly, we thank you for this town of Oakland. We thank you for each and every individual in the sound of my voice, Lord. You know everyone our hearts and use a heart fixer and a mind regulator. And for that reason, we want to say thank you. We thank you for those that usually be here, but they are not here tonight, and you know the reason why. But, Lord, you say let us come together in unity, peace, harmony, and love. Whatever is on the agenda tonight, Lord, let it be done in your name, Lord, that peace, harmony, and love could take place. Lord, we just ask you to let the words out of mouths and the meditation truly of our hearts be acceptable in your sanctity, oh, Lord, our strength and our redeeming. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening. Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Satterfield?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
I'm here.
Commissioner Ramos is absent. Commissioner McMullin?
Present.
Okay, um, so with that done, we're going to, we've got three presentations tonight. We're going to start with a proclamation, um, National Preparedness Month. We'll read that real quick here. Whereas the month of September is recognized as National Preparedness Month and creates an opportunity for every resident of the town of Oakland to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for emergencies and natural disasters. And during an emergency, every second counts and emergency preparedness programs educate individuals and families on how to prepare before or after a disaster. And these programs address threats of severe weather, terrorism, and other potentially life-threatening circumstances to make our communities better prepared and resilient and safer. And emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident and all town of Oakland residents are urged to make preparedness a priori, orderly, and work together to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And all town of Oakland residents are encouraged to participate in preparedness activities and become more prepared by making a plan, building a kit, and saving. Now therefore, I, Shane Taylor, by virtue of authority vested in this mayor of the town of Oakland, for on behalf of the entire town commission, do hereby proclaim September 2025 and the town of Oakland a national preparedness month. Good luck. We haven't got into hurricane. Oh, sorry. Uh, the next one is Labor Day, which is Monday. Labor Day, Monday. Time off close Monday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, whereas Labor Day is a time honored tradition in the United States dedicated to recognizing the invaluable contributions of American workers who've dedicated hard work that built and sustained our nation's economy and prosperity. And the town of Oakland, Florida, is deeply committed to celebrating the achievements of our local workforce, acknowledging the vital role that workers in all industries play in ensuring the continued growth and success of our community. And Labor Day also serves as a reminder of the importance of fair and equitable working conditions, a right to a safe workplace, and the continued need to advocate for the rights and well-being of all workers. And the town of Oakland is proud to honor the men and women who contribute tirelessly to the strength, vitality, and well-being of our community and to reflect on the progress made in the pursuit of labor rights and the work that still lies ahead. And as we gather to celebrate this Labor Day, we recognize the diversity, dedication, resilience of our workforce, and we commit to supporting initiatives that promote, that promote job creation, fair wages, and opportunities for all. Now therefore, I, Shane Taylor, by virtue of authority vested in this mayor of the town of Oakland, Florida, and on behalf of the entire town commission, do hereby proclaim September 1, 2025 as Labor Day. And the town of Oakland urges all citizens to join in recognizing and celebrating the valuable contributions of workers in our communities across our nation. Happy Labor Day, everybody. So again. Um, next on this is, uh, we've, uh, last meeting, we talked a little bit about Waste Pro and the, um, series of, uh, emails that the commission received and some Facebook posts that were, uh, out there about trash and, um, the amount, a number of trash pickups a week and, and twice a week, or, or recycling and all that stuff. So, uh, we heard you, and what we're doing is we've asked Waste Pro, uh, to come tonight and kind of talk to us a little bit about that, um, issue. And we shared with them the comments that we were getting from residents. Uh, actually met with them briefly on, uh, Mon-
Friday?
Friday last week, uh, and talked to the Waste Pro staff, uh, about their concerns and stuff. So, um, we've asked them to come in tonight, maybe give a presentation on, on, uh, uh, what we can do. And is there any questions, uh, that you guys need as well? So we're going to open it up to you guys and ask whatever question you can start again. So please.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners, staff in, in town. Thank you all for showing up tonight. I'm here with, my name is Flatlock, just some of the government affairs director with Waste Pro, Florida. I'm here with Regina Correa. She's our illustrious division manager. She is not only a 30-year veteran in this industry, she's somewhat of a, uh, local hero in the solid waste community of central Florida. She's laughing at me. But anyway, she's, um, she knows the town very well. She used to work with the company that, that had the solid waste contract for the, the current agreement. So she knows you guys well. So, um, in a nutshell, just to kind of catch everyone up to speed here, in June of last year, this contract went out to bid. Uh, four respondents submitted proposals the following month. That was Waste Management, who was incumbent, FCC, Coastal Waste, and Waste Pro. And the Solid Waste Commission found that Waste Pro was the most responsive and the best value. Now, in the bid, there were two options. There was a once-a-week option and a twice-a-week option. The town had, I'm set away from this, if that's okay. The town had currently been utilizing a twice-a-week option, and we got very aggressive with the once-a-week option. And the reason for that was we were just coming out of COVID, prices were spiking, um, raw materials were spiking, and just overall prices were escalating. Labor, steel, rubber, diesel fuel, steel, insurance, everything was just getting out of control. So what we did is we really got aggressive with the once-a-week proposal with the idea we could present the town with the best possible value.
Could you just speak in that because there may be people?
Absolutely.
I mean, just, I know.
I'll, I'll turn it maybe down.
Got you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So in any rate, um, I forgot what I was saying. Yeah, that's where we are. We're the once-a-week option, and that's what we decided to go aggressively with. And that is what the Solid Waste Commission, um, decided to vote for or cite or, uh, recommended. Fast forward, about six months later, the contract began in February of '06. And knock on wood, it's, the contract is going very well from a certain standpoint. We understand that the prior or previous hauler had had some hiccups and service issues. And from what I understand, we're, we're doing quite well from a collection service issue. Now, with that being said, we're on the downside of summer, and there have been some concerns or issues in regards to heat as it relates to, um, maggots and, and heavy scent. So we met with the mayor and staff to address these issues, and we think we came to a, a somewhat pretty good agreement of things that we need to recommend to the town. So before I lay everything out, I would like to open it up, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, to, to the town and see if what issues are there. Um, and please, uh, raise your hands. Uh, let me know. That's what we're here for. We have expert here, Regina. And, um, and we're more than welcome to, to address any issues. Please.
Um, the recycling.
Wait, 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 wait.
I have to stand up.
Oh, sorry. Just so, because somebody can hear you.
I'm standing over there.
Just go up here, somebody can hear you. There are people lined up.
In June, you have to tell who you are, everybody else.
Yeah, please speak in the mic.
Jill Cox, Ray Allen Walker. My question is, do we really, does recycling really get recycled? Because when a garden got rid of it, I know Tampa, there was a study guy that put air tags in the recyclable and all went to the garbage. And that's, I don't recycle because I've seen them throw the recycle, the company before, throw it in the garbage. So I'm just asking, is it truly getting recycled?
The answer is yes, most definitely. Not only is Oakland's recyclables getting recycled, contamination is a very, um, prevalent thing here in central Florida. But Oakland's recycling output is very, very clean. And what happens when a load gets contaminated, so to speak, is primarily due to, um, organics, such as food waste, wet waste, and plastic bags. And we found, we haven't had a formal evaluation in Oakland's recycling, where we found it to be very clean. So yes, it is getting recycled. And it is, is, and it's at the top of the food chain in terms of Orange County municipalities. So yes. You guys who want to be judges, I, I do recommend you recycle. It is getting recycled.
I'll do the air tags first.
I'm Tammy Pettitella, 28 Oak Point Circle. Uh, just to, I agree with Joe on that, about the recycling. I never, I, I hear all kinds of stories that it's never getting recycled. I'd like to know what that process is, where it goes, how it gets, where it gets transferred, all of that.
Sure.
But also, um, it's, we have to rinse things out in order to get that clean recycling that you like as well. So our water supply in Oakland is kind of limited, and it's expensive as well, you know? So it's work for us to put it there, so at least let us know that it's definitely getting recycled. It's, if we could go to twice-a-week trash pickup and maybe just stop the recycling altogether, or maybe only do recycling every other week since it's clean, you know? We're talking about Amazon boxes, lots of those, and, um, and our clean cans and things like that.
Sure.
So I'm just wondering if that's another option. I do appreciate what the committee has done with their time and effort to, to research this and put this all together. You can't please everybody all the time, as we all know that, so just a couple of other issues.
I'm going to bring Regina up here. There's no better expert to address.
Good evening, everybody. Um, yes, it does get recycled. We, we bring it to a recycler, a recycler where they actually sort it. Uh, they sort plastics, aluminum, uh, the, um, cardboard and paper. Um, there's not much commodity for glass right now, so they do throw the glass out um, at the recycler if there's glass in there. We usually ask everybody to just keep the glass out for now until the commodity gets better. Um, the, the reason why maybe the previous hauler mixed it all together is they have a recycler and they have, uh, solid waste disposal sites. Uh, Waste Pro doesn't have any sites. So we actually take it where it belongs, and we give it to the recycler for free. Um, and they sort it, and then they break it down, they barrel it, and then it goes to a mill and they sell it. Now, we won't guarantee that it is recycled because Waste Pro just August 1st bought a, uh, a recycled MRF. We feel that much about it, that we, we, we believe in it, and we bought a company that actually has a sorting line. And at some point in the next nine months, when we transition altogether as one happy family, we will start sorting ourselves and bailing it and sending it out. So we, we can guarantee that it does go to a recycle center. Um, and then we'll, we'll, we'll sell it to the mills ourselves rather than let someone else do it for us. The processing charge for recycling is extremely high. Um, there's three different ones around town. They go from $175 a ton to, uh, $95 a ton. Uh, and the middle one is like $140 a ton. If you landfill it, it's, it's going up in October to $54 a ton. So a lot of people just trash it because it's cheaper, right? And a lot of people, the cost is very important to them, and it costs money to recycle. I remember back in the day in the 90s when they first started recycling, and it was free, right? People always said, oh, recycling is free. It really was never free because there's a processing charge for that, but they didn't charge us to recycle. And as the years have gone on, it's more money to dispose of recycling and sell it than it is to, you know, landfill it. But it does get recycled, and we will eventually, you know, in within a year, we'll start recycling it ourselves. So.
So we're essentially going to be internalizing it. Anyone else? Please, take your hands up forward here.
John Hammerstein, 306. Um, how do we stop flies and maggots?
I get it, but, okay. So in the heat, it's going to bring the bugs, it's going to bring in the flies, and it's going to create maggots. Maggots are going to create flies, right? Um, one, bag the trash, right? Once the trash is bagged, tie it up tight and put it in the cart. Close the lid completely. But there is another fail-safe. If you have bleach at the house, you know, cleaning bleach, put on a rag, wipe the top of the cart, the inside of the cart, and around the lid of the cart. Those maggots will die instantly once they touch the bleach. Um, and you, you could also use WASP spray. If you just spray around the rim of the top of the lid of the cart, they die instantly as soon as they, they come in contact with that WASP spray. Bleach, ammonia, WASP spray, and, and really a lot of any kind of bug spray, but I, I, I like the WASP spray the best. Um, but in, in, once it starts to get hot, you know, if you just wipe that down every other week or something, you should be fine, but the trick is to bag it and, and tie the bag tight when you put it in there. Sometimes, uh, if you see a couple, if you don't like the smell, you see a couple of bugs, spray it down after service. Just take your, your, your garden hose and just spray it down, and then just wipe it with the bleach, and it should keep the bugs out. Um, you know, we talked to, with the, with the mayor on Friday, and, you know, twice a week versus once a week, and, you know, what does everybody want to do, you know? And it's, they had some complaints, and, you know, we, we would talk through the twice-a-week and once-a-week. I mean, the town mascot just went out for bid for twice-a-week service, and it's $38 a house, right? And we, right, right now with, with the town, it's 24. If we go to twice a week, it's going to be somewhere around $34, $35. Um, it's going to go up, you know? And that, that, when people have fixed incomes, that's a lot of money, you know, $10 more a month. Um, so we're trying to, to be respectful of, of, of everybody and, and conscious of, of the cost. You know, if we can save some money, we will. Um, but it will be costly to change out the service that we just changed in, in, in February. I, I suggest we wait it out, go a year, see how it is. And if it's just a few months in the summer, and we can do some remediation, if, if it really becomes a, a bad habit at somebody's house, because I know some of the HOAs would have to keep it in the garage, you know, the smaller container, maybe two smaller containers, you know? Just make sure that lid is closed tight. And if you can get through the summer, once the heat is gone, you won't see the bugs anymore.
So, um, I make sure my lids.
You have to come up.
Yeah, they come up.
Sorry, John. Can't hear you at home, John. John again.
Sure.
The lid is tight, but it does not seal tight.
Okay.
So water and bugs still begin in it, over one. We bag all our trash, we tie it, and I've still had problems with the flies and what they do.
Um, if I could get your address, I'll swap, swap that out and get a different lid, because the lid should close completely.
Should be nesting right over the lid.
There shouldn't be, it shouldn't not close completely.
It's a flat line. I think it just lays on top.
Yeah.
It just, yeah.
It's, it's called nest, nesting. It, it should just go right over the mold where it's totally closed. And, and on personal note, I, I'd like you folks, I set my trash out once a week. I bag it, I tie it, I make sure the lid is nested. I walk by maybe four times a, a week, and I, I don't have any issues. I did have maggots at one time, but I really cinched down on that bag. I mean, I really tied it to where it was, wouldn't close, and I had no more maggots.
Is there an option where you can put a lid in top that's better sealed and then close the other lid?
Yeah, that would be a good, a new product. And we ordered all our carts from one vendor.
Okay.
Try, try this, and let's.
I'm not, I'm not going to take the time to bleach it and do all that every time, just to prevent maggots.
Well, then maybe we need to get you a new card. Get you something that can nest a little bit better.
And go mine and see.
Just give us your address, we'd be more happy to answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like the bleach and the bug spray and the extra bags, you know, that costs money too, you know?
Hey, you gotta, you gotta come up to the line. I'm sorry. Because there, there will be people, um, that will re-watch this, believe it or not, and, and they can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
They don't be calling and yelling and complaining.
So it's Tammy Pettitella, 28 Oak Point Circle. But anyway, the bags and the bleach and the bug spray and whatever it is that you're going to spray in there and wash it out and hose it out, that's stuff we didn't have to do before. And those things cost money, you know? I had, somebody suggest on Facebook to put it in a Ziploc bag and put it in my freezer. I'm, yeah, I mean, if somebody's doing that, good for them, but I'm not allowed to do something like that. So I mean, you, you know, it's just, I mean, not that it's a, a whole lot of work, but it's stuff that we didn't have to do before. And, and it's still, you know, I, I, it's in my garage. It's Florida. It's hot. I don't, you know, December, it, it's still hot and there's bugs. And so I don't know how we're going to, you know, think that winter, you know, it probably won't be as bad in the winter, but still, you know? Um, and, and then bugs get in your house. I mean, we've had, I opened my garage door, and flies are coming in my house. And I don't know if roaches are going through that or what, and you can't keep it outside. First of all, most of the HOAs won't allow you, but there's so many critters around here, you can't keep anything outside. There's coyotes and raccoons and squirrels, everything gets, gets at it. I know, they're, you know, they were all over my yard all night. So.
My name's Jeff Sandy, 90 Demmons. Um, what about vinegar spray of some form? Spray that?
It works too.
What about a mothball every beginning after trash day, throw a mothball in? Do you think that might work?
I don't know about the mothballs, but the vinegar spray would work. Um, that, that, that is also an option. Um, I don't know about the mothballs. I've never used the mothballs. We can try. But we put them in the bottom of the cart.
Well, I was thinking either the, uh, the, maybe the trash guys add that on to the costs, and when they dump it, throw a mothball in it, you see, you know?
I, I, I'll research that for sure.
No, because it's just a way of, uh, wait until next time, and then the mothball gets dumped. But only during the, the hot months.
Right, right. No, I'll definitely do a little research on it.
Like vinegar, vinegar water? Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Pollard?
You know what? The guys are nice. If they come by and do the service, you'll have the great guys.
Good.
Polly Bowler. I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm just trying to figure it out. And then I thought about it. It could be because we're dealing with the maggots because it's so hot. Um, but I, I put it in a trash bag and I tied it up and I throw, throw it in there. And then when I go to roll it out, which I'm not going to touch it because of the fact that, you know, the bugs are crawling and it's so bad. But you said, so you gave me some ideas and I'm going to try it. And I have an email address that I'm going to email to you guys, you know, to say, hey, this didn't work because it, it's, it's crazy because today was trash day, and I almost lost it when it was time to take it to the curb because it was so bad. But we just have to, I, I'll try what you've said and, um, we'll go from there because, let me tell you something. I'll be calling and emailing, but I, I got numbers to tell you. You know, just so that we can know what's, how to take care of that. That's it.
Yeah, you, you brought a good point, and I'm glad you brought this up, which is if you have, if you're having issues, contact Waste Pro Direct. Um, because if, if, when you contact the town, and the town's going to call down, call Mike, and then Mike's going to pick the phone up and call down. So your fastest thing is to go to Waste Pro Direct, and, um, I think their number is.
They have, there, there's a card. They'll pass cards out. They have it, so if you want it, they'll give it to you.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I also want to say, it changes hard sometimes. I've, I've been doing this 30 years here in Florida, and Orange County had 298,000 residents back in 2016, and they went from twice a week to once a week. And, and honestly, we struggled through a lot in those, in those beginning years. And I mean, years, it took probably three years for a lot of people to just settle down. Um, I don't want you to wait three years. Uh, we can come up with a solution, honestly. Um, you have 1,800 approximately homes here, and we can, we can come up with a solution for you. Um, but before the commission goes and, and says, let's just go back to twice a week, let's just try a few things and, and see if it, it works, um, before they make that final decision and get through our first summer and see how bad is it really, and then go from there. But we're willing to work with you guys. If I need to swap out a cart, I'll swap the cart out. I have no problem with that. We'll clean what you have and, because the, the truth is, once you do get the maggots, you really have to clean that cart, because even if there's one left, they can multiply. So it's really important to clean that cart after you do have them and get rid of them, just because. And, 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 and it is, you know, it's, it's a pain, I know it, but it, it can be worked through.
I just had a quick question, and, um, fortunately, I'm not having this problem. So I want to be sensitive to everybody, but one of the things I was just thinking about was if you have the lid closed, if you, like, if you just had something you could set on top of it and make sure that, I mean, just, it doesn't have to be something super heavy, but, because again, as long as nothing can get in there, you shouldn't have a problem. You shouldn't have to do all the extra measures of, you know, all that other, you know, bleach and things like that. But like, if you just put something somewhat heavy on the lid to make sure that it's good and down, that you can easily take off and roll it out so that again, it's not a lot of extra steps, you're not having. Because again, once you, if you don't have the problem and you get it remedied, then you're good, but.
I've seen people put, use a bungee cord, and they just bungee it down, but then they got to unbungee it every time. I've seen people put a box on top, just, you know, just put a box on top.
Like I said, I don't think it needs to be anything super heavy.
It's just to weigh it down just so it seals all the way around. You know, and sometimes the heat could warp it a little bit. And, and that's why I said, if you want to, I'll swap out your cart, because it could just be from the heat, where it's just warped a little bit, and then you can get a new one and it, and it'll sit fine.
Right.
So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Real quick, I'll ask. Okay, yes, sir.
Scott Renn, 305 Ben's Grove. Um, I guess I'm the odd man out, and I'm going to congratulate you guys for a great job. Um, one of the nice things that I did see around our neighborhood is recycling is doubled on my street because of the carts. It's a lot easier to put it in the cart than to put it in the green can. Um, personally, some tips. If you've got something that's really gooey and disgusting, throw it out. If it takes two seconds to rinse and use a little water, rinse it. But paper, cardboard, plastics, you know, water bottle, all that stuff can be recycled. Keeps it out of the landfill for our future generations. So that's a good reason for everybody to recycle. So the other thing about the cans is when you, you all collected everybody's cans from the community, there were lots of leftovers over here. So I came and picked up a couple for yardways because I didn't have large rolling cans. So there's a huge difference in people's cans that you could tell used either heavy bags or the people that threw trash in it, because some of those were disgusting. And I'm sure they had maggots and flies. So just like we have to clean up around the home, you got to clean your trash can every once in a while. There was, it, you know, I couldn't even tell you what was in the, inside of some of the ones that were there, but we don't have any problem.
Did you take those out?
No, actually, I did. I got two for somebody else, and I scrubbed them out. Bleach and brush, let water sit in, and they're clean as new. I gave two to my friends because they're all fruit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody on the table have any comments or questions? So what we'd like to do is continue how we have the- So what we'd like to do is continue how we have the current setup right now. Let's go through that year period and, and again, those people who spent time on the, on the committee, we appreciate that, as, as Andy said, we really appreciate your effort for doing that and reviewing and being distored of, of the costs that are associated with the trash pickup. And you keep in mind that every year there's a cost increase that goes up on trash. It's just, it's a CIT that keep continuing to go up, but, um, what, what we, what we should do is just continue this path on. We're, we're coming out of the summer months, um, hopefully it won't be that bad. But if it continues and it does, this happens, then we can certainly go back and reevaluate and figure out, okay, should we just go back to two days or is one day good or what? So if everybody were kinda just, uh, let's, let's do that way right now and then let's reevaluate. Um, in the next contract, April or, or February? So February, we can kinda just go through again, uh, April, February, March and go through again. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Yeah, thank you for keeping the class.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, moving right along, um, uh, and thank you, everybody who, who, who had questions and, and spoke up. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, uh, it's, uh, on a consent agenda tonight is our minutes from the 8/12/2025 Town Commission regular meeting. Uh, the Oakland Avenue charter school, outlet field teacher assignments was in your packet. Sidewalk easements on East Oakland Avenue that was also in your packet. Contract amendment with, uh, CPH, a lease agreement for the West Orange Arts and Heritage Center concession area. We're, we're sure we'll talk more about that later. And town commission holiday meeting schedule and the town holiday closure, I'll have that on there. Any questions? Any men will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, second?
I'll second the motion.
Next one?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Great, uh, next on the item is our, is a couple of resolutions and the first one is resolution number 2025-07 and it has to do with the 2026 election qualifying dates.
A resolution of the Town of Oakland, Florida establishing the beginning and any dates and times to qualify as a candidate for the 2026 town general election and providing for conflicts, servability, and an effective date. This resolution, this resolution is to approve the qualifying dates for the March 10th election for the following dates. To qualify by petition, November 17th through December 2nd. To qualify by fee, December 3rd to December 8th. Okay, well, there are three seats of, yes, three seats open for this election. Seat one for a four-year term is currently Commissioner Keller's seat. Seat three completing for, completing a two-year term is currently Commissioner Ramos's seat. And seat four for a four-year term is currently Commissioner McMullin's seat. Any interested candidates may announce their candidacy at any time by filing forms with me. You do not need to wait for the qualifying dates. If you are interested in running for a seat, please contact me for more information.
Okay, so anybody interested in, uh, the next election cycle coming up? Reach out to Kathy if you like that, if you have any questions or, or anything about qualifying. Just go right to Kathy so we can see, uh, sharing the dates again, uh, on our website as, as well. Any questions or comments from the day?
I'm sorry, I just want, is there...
Oh, oh, oh. You gotta come up.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Polly Bowler, and I just, is there a term?
Yeah. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, there is a four, it's, it's a four-year commitment.
So it's four years?
It's right now.
But no, like, let's say you do four years and then you, you're elected and then you can do another four years?
Right.
And then what if it comes to 16?
Yeah, you can, because currently our charter, our charter doesn't have anything in that, so we're currently missing a term.
Okay.
You can go forever.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, uh, any, anybody else on the table have any questions? Anybody else in the audience have any questions before we move forward? No, you're in, okay. Um, we'll entertain a motion on that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-7, 2026 election qualifying dates.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next resolution is, um, resolution number 2025-08 and this is amending the town facility rental rates, increasing those.
A resolution of the Town of Oakland, Florida adopting amended rental model and rates, amended facility rental cleanup policies, and an amended facility rental contract for the town home property known as the Oakland Meeting Hall, repealing rental model and rates for the Oakland Meeting Hall, providing for legislative findings and providing for conflicts, servability, and an effective date.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments anybody has from the table? Or did you need a second?
No, I, I can just cover it real quick. So, so basically what we're doing is we're going to full-day rentals on Saturday and Sunday and evening rentals on Fridays, um, so basically 2:00 PM to midnight on Fridays, um, which is kind of been our policy since COVID. We haven't been doing part-day rentals, we've been doing only full-day rentals. Um, so this just revises our policy and basically the Friday rental rates will stay the same. Weekend rental rates will increase slightly. Um, and then we're doing, also adding in a chair storage fee. So when people bring in their own chairs, it'll provide, um, some funding for our guys to be able to take because they have to take these chairs all the way over to public works, store them, bring them all the way back every time somebody brings in their own chairs. So those are basically the changes to this policy.
Okay. I apologize, Elise, I'm sorry, you even told me, hey, you must say something about this. Uh, just real quick for me, um, so our, uh, the, the new rental, uh, day cost for a full day for Saturdays and Sundays, it's $800 per day for a town resident and a non-residence $1,000.
That's correct.
What was the original?
So it was 400 for a four-hour block, 600 for an eight-hour block for residents. So it's going up to basically 600 to 800, so they get, um, seven extra hours. So they can have it from 9:00 until midnight, so that's 15 hours. Where before they only had an eight-hour block. Non-residents are going, they had $500 for a four-hour block and 800 for an eight-hour block and that's going to $1,000 for the 15-hour block.
Okay, and Friday for 600, or apparently you're gonna go to 600?
Yeah, it's basically staying the same price, they just get, uh, an eight-hour block, they're just getting two extra hours on Fridays.
Okay. All right. Everybody needs a, so weekday stay the same, nothing, nothing there.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Any comments or questions from anybody? No?
Um, so I just have a question about the deposit is 350 for both residents and non-residents. Are we confident that that covers us for most anything, any damage or anything to the building?
That's been covering everything, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments from that audience? No? Okay. Um, bring it back here, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept resolution 2025-08 as presented.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. All right, next is, uh, public comment. Uh, if you have anything you'd like to say that's not on the agenda, we invite you to come up. We're going to ask that you keep it to three minutes and we'll stop you after three minutes. Anyone anchors today? Yes, sir.
I'll have to write it down, I forgot it. My name's Jeff, I live at, uh, 90 Demmons. I wanted to check and find out if there was any follow-up on the streets. I know that we got a, uh, in the newsletter, information that we had success with the fines that were put down, uh, on the dirt roads, I think I read that. And, uh, but then I started thinking about the resealing of the existing asphalt. Do we wanna try to save these roads, uh, or have they cracked too much in certain areas and can't seal them? That was just something, I don't know if it was ever, it, the people that were here that night, were gonna go take a look at our roads and see if they could possibly extend them a few more years without having to resurface everything. And so I don't know if they did that or what, any kind of...
You're talking about your neigh, your neighborhood somewhere.
Well, yes, going down the main drag and then as you turn corners onto the streets, you see them starting to crack as you look at the roads. And I was wondering if there was something, a good sealer that could be put down, or has it gone too far?
So, uh, I can answer that for you. So in, uh, the next fiscal year budget, we have set aside funding for milling and resurfacing of, uh, that particular neighborhood as needed. Uh, as far as I know, there's no problem with that, but we've, uh, you know, they haven't passed the budget yet for next year.
Okay.
As far as sealing it, it's probably not a good use of material at this point. It's got, uh, it has cracked quite a bit and then no, Holland is even, you know, in worse condition.
Okay, okay. Uh, like I said, I forgot to write down the other items, I'll maybe back up here. Look, oh, 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 I remember. I'm excited. Um, the, the other question, a long time ago, I mentioned about possibly having Duke somehow extend their service on the new subdivisions to existing subdivisions. I don't know if the infrastructure that they put in for the new houses, if the underground can carry the additional load or not. But that way we're not relying on Tub Street so much for our service, for our power. Because as you know, we, it's, it's been great recently. I mean, the guys have been out there trimming trees and I mean, it's, it really has made a difference in consistent power service. But I was thinking, you know, we're in the national blah, blah, blah thing and I was thinking that it might be, uh, some way, someone to address this with Duke. Because I know if I call...
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly go with that.
Well, and it doesn't matter, just a few houses, whoever gets, you know, that additional load would be nice.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll close the, uh, public, uh, comment and we'll come back to our town manager and the department report.
Um, as the mayor says, our offices will be closed on Monday for Labor Day. Um, I did want to highlight, if you haven't gotten a flyer, we have a new upcoming fall event flyer. It was in the packet, but there's a lot of upcoming events that are, that are a lot of fun. Um, we have a new exhibit at the Arts and Heritage Center, that's Roots of Memories, that starts September 12th. Um, we have a Oakland, Town of Oakland block party that will be taking place in front of the Arts and Heritage Center on September 19th and that'll be a lot of fun. Um, Oakland and the Nature Preserves have a nature fest on September 20th. And then we have Music Under the Oaks on October 11th and State of the Town address with your mayor on October 22nd. So those are just what's coming up in September and October, it's gonna be a lot of fun. So hopefully you can join us and come out and, um, be part of these events.
80's and 90's Star Band from San Antonio. Did they make good music in New York? Not showing any, right? All right, we'll go around to one here, Gabby, our finance director, how's it going?
It's going. I'm just working on budgets.
Budgets, let's talk budgets. So, uh, there is a, our schedule budget for regular meeting and, uh, and September is coming up on September 8th. I'm looking at the cheat sheet in front of me to talk about our intended budget hearing is on September 8th at 6. I'm guessing that is a workshop. And then September 8th, 2025, at 7 during the regular commission meeting, that's the regular commission meeting. And September 23rd is the final budget workshop at 6 and then we'll probably talk about it and we'll see if we like it on the 23rd and ask it, right? Next up.
So on the 8th, we will present to you what we discussed at the original budget workshop that we had June. So any, um, suggestions that the commission had or residents had have been applied to the budget and any updates have been done, so we'll present that to you, Elise and I. Um, and then that's where you guys will have your input, the town residents will have their input. Um, and if any changes need to be made, that's where it will be done before the final budget. So if you guys, um, have anything that you are very passionate about, this is the time to tell me, so, okay.
So please come to the workshop, um, and, and be heard so we know what, what you want. Yeah? Anything else? And then Monday, right?
It is a Monday. It's a Monday, I'm just saying.
And, and, I'm sorry, speaking of dates, um, there's a holiday schedule that we talked about that we passed as well. There's a commission meeting that's also on Monday because of a, um, a holiday as well.
Well, and I said it was, um, Labor Day, but it's Veterans Day, so on November 11th we'll have our November meeting. Um, our only November meeting will be on November 10th.
Right, okay. That's on Monday, that's a new trip, yeah, bro, yeah, okay. Gabby, sorry, just, just confusing everybody, that's all I'm trying to do.
So Monday, September 8th, be there or be square.
Yeah, that is a girl. Chief? Give me something good, chief.
I, I have nothing, I have nothing good, I have nothing.
How's school?
School?
No.
School, again, speeders, nothing?
Our school, uh, the traffic enforcement has been plentiful. We, 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 uh, but it seems like pension is now under control and I think I, we really don't see many problems.
Right.
The school line, much like every school in Orange County, 20, 25 minute, uh, traffic congestion and work itself out. Have not had any problems, legitimate problem.
And I would like to point out, chief, uh, you did, you did post the, uh, in, in Winter's Landing with the, with the neighbors', um, concerns about speeders coming from Oakland Park and going up to the four-way stop at Oakland Avenue. You did place a, a speed control sign, which was good, because I think that really helped out, it slowed people down. I've actually, I actually watched it for a little bit, so yeah, thank you.
So we, we had to return that yesterday, so if you borrow that from the Garden Police. Uh, but we had for about 40 days, seemed to work, it was, it was in combination with the enforcement. Got a lot of good feedback from the residents along that, that strip there. Uh, but when, when actually monitoring the traffic pattern, very small percentage of people that were doing above 7, 7 miles an hour, say 7 miles an hour or whatever.
Over the 20.
Yeah, so very, very small. And the school speed film cameras are installed, stayed in, were in that warning tree and now, uh, we're working through that, but it's, it's, we're working through the software, we're working through the warning tree, but it looks like everything's fine with that.
Great. Thanks, sir. All right, a couple of words, John or Mike, anyone?
I think, uh...
Ah, I don't know. All on my. Time's going.
Well, I've got about 20 minutes to talk about it on there right now. So I would like to just, um, uh, what do you wanna call it? Go into the, uh, comment about the power and, you know, having the, uh, the new subdivisions, you know, chime in and, and assist us with that. Uh, prior to about three or four years ago, the majority of the, uh, energy for, um, Oakland came down Tub Street, Oakland Avenue and Tub Street. But with Oakland Park, I know that Duke Energy did some hardening of the facilities out there and they ran a new, a brand-new high-service line, I guess. Uh, I'm not an electrical guy, I just saw what they were doing, I don't know what they were doing. But they, uh, they did put in a lot of new equipment and then they made connections to the grid here, which I believe took about 175 surfaces, uh, off the existing grid. So the grid that was typically, you know, going out of power every time the wind blew, about 175 of those homes in the general region, uh, were taken off that, so, you know, it's a pretty good thing. So, anyway, so the manager's report, or in this case, I'm gonna call it the roadwork report. Um, I got a quick note regarding the road closure on San Spirella Road that began yesterday. Uh, for those of you who may not know where that is, that's the street running through the Longleaf neighborhood that connects State Road 50 to Oakland Avenue. So anyway, the street is closed. So anyway, the street is closed, uh, through traffic, uh, everything seems to be going well. This is only day two, um, and they're, they're installing a stormwater crossing there. Uh, and barring any unforeseen issues, that work is scheduled to be completed by this Friday, and that also includes the paving of that patchwork out there. So that's good. So, uh, also restoration work has been underway, uh, in some areas, uh, like Bobcat Chase and that, uh, where they can, they can actually do that. So bottom line, project seems to be moving well. No, no injuries, no deaths, no nothing, and it's, so far it's been really good. Speaking of road work, our paving contractor will be coming back to the Oakland Shores neighborhood, uh, the week of September fifteenth to complete the driveways, and, uh, we've asked him to install some additional buildings on North Arrington Street and make it look like a complete road work, you know? Because there is a, there was a disparity in the, um, in the material. Uh, and still speaking of road work, at the, uh, the next commission meeting, staff will be bringing to you the final report that spells out the priority street improvements for the next few years. You may recall that a few months ago, Myra Mydell, uh, presented the PowerPoint that effectively prioritized the next few years of street improvements of the dirt roads. September, yeah. Uh, and finally wrapping up the road work, the construction of Catherine Ross is progressing in a reasonable rate. We're, I'm keeping our fingers crossed that they, uh, do not encounter any tropical systems, uh, because that, that would definitely delay the work, especially with the crossing of the, the, uh, Johnson Lake outfall. So that's, uh, that's a.
And that's still worked out, Mike?
What's that?
That's all good, that's worked out?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's worked out. Yeah, we saved, uh, quite a number of trees that were slated to be removed. Uh, we've managed to, to build, you know, they're building a good road for us. It's really gonna work out. Improve the drainage in that area and then the, uh, canal crossing will, will make that a little more, uh, you know, acceptable for public traffic. So, uh, oh yeah, there is one more. The town recently received the final plans for, uh, improving the intersection of Canyon Creek, uh, Mackey and Winter's Landing, where that little three-way intersection is. The next step is bidding and contractor selection, and I anticipate that happening in fiscal year twenty-six, which we're, you know, we're, what, five weeks away from. We've asked the Bentley Group, who did the design for a cash order, to assist us with this as any, as well as any project management and post-design services. Construction should take place early January or February of twenty-six, if everything comes together, so.
And that intersection will be closed?
Yeah.
So there'll be traffic around the Sahr or whatever.
Yeah. Any questions? I'm gonna leave it at that.
No? And Kathy?
Yes.
Anything new? All good?
All good, thank you.
All right, bringing it back to the table, Commissioner Cut, do you have anything good?
I, I just wanted to, uh, say that I really enjoyed attending the Florida Lega Cities Conference. I don't want to steal too much of your thunder, you probably have things you wanna share about, no? It was, it was great to represent Oakland as the voting delegate, that it was, it was really just great to go to and learn about, um, you know, as a new commissioner, learning about just general things about town and commission government and meeting other, uh, commissioners and council people from other cities. And then really the, the big takeaway for me, uh, that I heard over and over throughout the presentations was, you know, Florida Lega Cities motto is local voices making local choices, which is their initiative that, you know, that we make the decisions for our towns, not the state government and things like that, which, um, again, it was, it's their, it's kind of their tagline, but it, it just was something that was reinforced through different things that I, different sessions that I attended, and I think that that's something really important. So I've asked everybody that feels that way to think about that, you know, with upcoming elections and things like that, to make sure that we have the control over what happens in our town. So that was a really, uh, great second, great opportunity to learn more and I enjoyed it.
Thank you. Joseph, you have?
Just to add to that conference, uh, that's the end of fiscal year, so the fiscal year for the conference is August to August. And so we're in the beginning of the new year, and with that being said, session comes up in, in, uh, January, and, um, you know, there's a lot that's gonna be happening in the state for, the, the league creates committees to put together policies, similar to what Commissioner Keller was saying, um, so we can be prepared for some of the things that are coming our way. So having a voice, local voices involved. I'm on a committee that starts, uh, in September, the Development Co-Compliance and Redevelopment Policy Committee. About two years ago, I think last year, we submitted a suggestion around impact fees. So if the, the town has some other policies that we want to submit to this committee and all the other committees, I know Elise, uh, can see all the other committees, we can submit some ideas, uh, to the committee. So those committees start in September, October, December, and, you know, as, as Commissioner Keller said, you know, it's always good to be among others to help you grow and help you understand how to be a better elected and learn how to, um, interact with, uh, with the citizens. And it just, it's, it's always a great obsession, it's always good, good, um, points to learn and bring back, and all I, I've, I've goal is to try to represent this town as best as possible, and they, and they gave us the tools. And so again, you know, we wanna be prepared for whatever happens in town. It has to start in January, so I wanna make sure that we continue to collaborate, work together.
I'm gonna add another comment. We've talked about this before, Mr. McAlmond brought it up, I've talked about it as well, and it was brought up over and over at that conference, and we talked about, you know, um, the state looking at getting rid of property taxes, and, um, one of the things that I've, I've said it before in these meetings, and again, it was, you know, it's important to us as the commission and the town to communicate to our town, our constituents, what that really means, and they talked a lot about that because, you know, the soundbite is, oh, no more property taxes. But then the other half of it that you're not hearing is, well, like in our town, fifty, how much, what is the percentage of our budget is property taxes?
So seventy percent of our budget is ad valorem, and of that fifty percent is residential ad valorem, which is what the state is targeting.
And half, more than half our budget is police and fire, correct?
That's right.
So, um, so if, you know, I know there was a lot of stuff with the Winter Garden just had, where they were gonna do a fire fee and everybody was up in arms about that, but if for some reason we were to lose property taxes as income for our town, it would be detrimental to Oakland. And we would have to, you know, again, and I know y'all, I know the mayor and Elise went to a meeting where they talked about the fact that, well, we're gonna give her the property taxes, we're just gonna change and make the different fee structure. So, so just, again, I just ask you and compel you to make sure you fully understand things when you get the opportunity to vote, if that's something that becomes a voteable thing for the people that you're voting for, because, um, I've, and I've said it to folks here in, in the, you know, in conversations before and after the meeting, that Oakland could cease to exist as we know it if we lost that money. And I think we all love this town, and again, that's why that, uh, local voices making local choices is so important. So just, you know, again, as you think about, um, different things that may come up, keep that in mind.
If I may, Elise was quiet, but she was in the meeting, you, she was in the meeting, it was, it was a ninety-minute meeting, just talking about property taxes. So, and Elise and I were in that meeting.
Yeah, and so, so one of the things, this, this issue is really bothering me, that this state can do this, so, so I actually am part of the Tri-County League Advocacy team. That's gonna work with FLC to try to message, you know, to our legislators what this means to, there's, there's four hundred and eleven municipalities in Florida, and the average size is like our size, right? So we're not the only jurisdiction that's dealing with this, but we all need to speak up because, like, like they said, it's detrimental to the existence of Oakland. Like, we will be swallowed up by a bigger municipality if this goes through, so we really need to pay attention. Um, I'm working from my angle to figure out the best way to message this to our, to our residents, right? So that they understand where their tax dollars are currently going and what this would mean, this kind of cut would mean. So look forward, marketing, you know, in the future on that, um, as I try to figure out what that looks like. But we'll keep you guys informed, um, but like Commissioner Keller said, just, just be aware of what you're voting for as, as we go forward.
Did you order the report from?
I did.
Okay. Cause FLC is creating reports for every city in town, and is only, due to breakdown financially, so we can present to all our citizens what that looks like. And that, but that meeting, we were in, probably showed about seven, eight cities and towns, and it wasn't free to include town capacity. You know, it wasn't free as far as they lose those dollars. We'd cease to exist.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thanks for attending, too. I just have one question. Where are we at with, I asked this a while back, um, the charter review? And are we going to meet the deadline? What is the deadline for that?
Yes, the deadline is right around the October timeframe to get the ordinance to you all, and, um, we have one meeting left, and we're anticipating that to be next month.
And, um, the, I'm sorry, no, I do have a charter. Yeah, same, just send everything on track, there's a, um, a lot that, like that.
Yes, oh, no, we'll make it.
And then that will be presented, right?
Yes.
By a, um, the board chair or the superintendent?
Right, they'll present it, um, with the ordinance attached, and.
Okay. That's it. Did a good job. I sat in one of the meetings, quite in the town, it was quite enlightening to see it. One thing I, the only thing I have is, I wanna share, um, in our, in our concession agenda item was, um, the concession stand that is now occupied by, um, Hot Dog Therapy. You guys, you know, Saturdays and Wednesdays, you see Hot Dog Therapy and his card out here, so, so he's kind of taken it to the next level and has now, uh, taken over the concession stand, and we have an agreement in place with him for at least a year, uh, to work. So, um, we wish him the best of luck, because if he's successful, we're all successful, the town's successful. Uh, you know, he, uh, has, obviously has hot dogs, he has pies, uh, and he's also got ice cream. So he's got the same ice cream as that scoop from the, that's his scoop, but it's fifty cents less. And I did that, but, uh, as, as, you know, talking, talking to Mark, uh, there, um, as business starts growing, and I think his grand opening is, well, his official opening, he's not opening right now, it's official in September, or, you said?
I wanna say, yeah, I wanna say it's like six or seven, something like that.
So he's going to, yeah, that weekend, uh, so he, uh, he, he's open now, uh, he's closed on Mondays, uh, is what he's gonna be closed on right now, but he's gonna be open every day, he's gonna give it this all, and I think he's gonna be open from ten to five right now. And if the interest goes, uh, he wants to try to stay open later, uh, for, you know, if you, uh, get home from work late and you're like, I don't like cooking, hopefully you can start doing that, hopefully start making some cheese sauce.
He, he changed his, uh, his hours today, he's now open from eleven to seven.
Eleven to seven, okay.
So go get after dinner, ice cream, or. He also has iced lattes, and he puts caramel in them. Four dollars, it's cheaper than Starbucks, and it's really good.
She does have a board.
She does have a board. So we're gonna cut to the chase here, go down there, see Mark, spend a lot of money and keep him here. He'll be happy, we'll be happy, he'll be a stack. Yeah. And, and, uh, we'll see if we can convince him to stay open at least eight thirty on Tuesdays, where there's a commission meeting. Gabby, you know, I saw that. We have a whole, a whole, you know, this is just the beginning, so you hope that he's successful, and then as, as the town goes, I know we, we talked about this a few months ago, about, you know, we're relooking at the streetscape of the town, especially Tub Street running down, and trying to entice that commercial that comes down through here. So, um, you know, hopefully that's just one little piece of it, and then it just starts sparring on the back. So please, if you get a minute, please go down and, uh, and.
We drove a lot of cars.
The radar's not looking good. Anybody else? No?
Your hearts might be satisfied, listen, journey, this is a, oh, pretty, uh.
Hey, run, it's your friend.